All right, it's 6:01. I just want to see who we have from the Board of Selectmen. I see Sean, Sean Askam, hi. Wendy McStudis, Mike Payne, Chris Peterson. Do we have Jackie Batos?
I'm here.
Oh, hi Jackie. Good. Awesome. Why don't we call the meeting to order? And please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. We're going to begin tonight with a public hearing, and it's on the proposed amendments to the tax abatement for volunteer firefighter and ambulance personnel. The state has given communities the opportunity to increase the size of the tax abatement for volunteer first responders. And if this passes, the annual cost of the program would double to approximately $135,000 a year. I know Jackie and Wendy served on the work group. I just wanted to see if there was anything you wanted to add for context before we begin the public hearing. So we have some comments that were submitted in writing, and then we also have some folks on the phone who are going to join us live. So I'll start by reading the public comments that we received by email. The first is from John and Virginia Tracy. Dear neighbors, the men and women of the Simsbury Volunteer Fire Department are true heroes. They responded in full force to a raging fire at our residence this past chilly Easter Sunday morning. And their professionalism and bravery kept a horrible situation from becoming a major catastrophe. Due to their collective diligence, the fundamental structure of our home of 30 years remained intact, and our friends' adjacent homes and surrounding woods were saved from further destruction. Their training, teamwork, and attention to detail were evident throughout the ordeal. We fully support any legislation intended to increase a tax abatement for those in the Simsbury Volunteer Fire Department and Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association who risk their own safety for that of their neighbors. Reducing taxes for those who serve as volunteers in these crucial capacities is the least we can offer our fellow Simsbury citizens. This next email came from Harold Bender. It reads, "I support the tax abatement for the volunteers." The final email we received came from Jeff Holmes to the Board of Selectmen. I write this as a taxpayer and currently president of the Simsbury Volunteer Fire Company in support to the increase of the tax abatement to the state's maximum allowable amount. The value the volunteers bring to the town of Simsbury is tremendous. The training these volunteer men and women receive, response times, and professionalism rivals some career fire departments in the area. The town should be grateful that the fire protection does not cost them substantially more with a paid department. For 76 years, the town of Simsbury has had volunteer firefighters protecting life and property. They deserve the increase. Countless missed family events, holidays, sleepless nights, all to make sure that our community is safe for free. The volunteers deserve the increase. It's the least the town can do to show appreciation to the dedication and commitment to the community that the fire company has. The increase may cost upfront, however, that cost is nothing compared to the millions of dollars a paid department would cost the town. Please pass the increase. Thank you. And we also have some folks on the line with us tonight for public comment. And I wanted to begin with Gary Wilcox. Gary, are you there? What about Chief Baldus?
Yeah, I am here, Eric. Gary Wilcox unfortunately got held over at a work situation, so he was not able to join us. He certainly sends his best and is hoping obviously for a favorable vote. I think the letters that you just read very much speak for themselves. I do think certainly that the volunteers deserve this increase. It's been quite some time since we've had an increase in the abatement that's been in place now for a number of years. And I think when you kind of look at even this past week, we had volunteers that had to attend to that very horrific accident on Route 185 this past week. They weren't paid to do that. They went there because they were going to help as much as they could. Even though the outcome wasn't what we wanted, the effort was there, and the effort was there made by the volunteers. And I think that's something that we all have to remember. Just as we started this meeting tonight, I don't know if you heard the whistles in the background. That was for a fire that they were attending to. Fortunately, it didn't turn out to be something significant. But again, your volunteers' force was responding as we sit here attending this meeting, hoping to provide them, I think, the benefit that they deserve.
Thank you. And Chief Kowalski?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to thank everyone for taking this project on and bringing it to this point in the abatement process. Certainly, I'm here to speak in favor of it. Over the last 20 years, the state of Connecticut's legislation has enabled the town government the right to grant firefighters, volunteer firefighters and ambulance personnel a tax abatement. Town did create an ordinance then to allow the firefighters who have been responding over the two years would receive $500 abatement against their property bill. After they serve over five years, that number would raise to 1,000. That number has stayed the same. You know, since in 2019, the state legislators increased the amount in a phased-in approach to $1,500 this year and next to $2,000 in 2022 or 2023. The firefighters have responded to over 650 calls on an average each year. They also require to train at least 65% of the scheduled training drills. That's equal to a tremendous amount of time given to the community at no cost or labor. We require a minimum number of calls per year to be eligible to receive this tax abatement. But generally, the average firefighter responds to far more than what's required. The Simsbury Fire Company has responded to the needs of the people of Simsbury for over 75 years without being paid to go to emergency. This highly trained group does not receive any pay for their response like a lot of the towns around us do. A lot of surrounding communities not only have a pay per call, but they also have the tax abatement. And I believe we're the only community that has a phased-in tax abatement based on five years and 50%. Other ones get the tax abatement, the full amount, the day they join. Several years ago, we did a study if the fire company were ever to go career fire department, working on shifts, the increase would be in excess of about 150% of increase to the taxes that we currently, the fire district currently charges. It would be in the millions, and we would not get the response we get now. That would be a totally substantially reduced staff working on shifts. Currently, we have in excess of 95 firefighters. During the last major storm, we were able to get over 75 responding almost immediately. That can't happen in a career department. You're going to get 21, and then you have to call in people. Basically, the firefighters here enjoy what they do. They enjoy servicing the community, and they enjoy doing the training. And they are the best at what they do. And they train hard to protect the people of Simsbury. I'm asking you to please pass the increase to show your support. And I respectfully ask that the town vote to allow the increase as prescribed by the legislature. Phase it in like the public act allows. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Was there anyone else on this meeting who wanted to speak on the ordinance before we close the public hearing? Okay, thank you both. Is there a motion to close the public hearing tonight?
I'm moved.
Second.
Mike seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. I anticipate that at our next meeting, we will put this on the agenda as an action item for a vote. Thank you, gentlemen, very much for joining us tonight.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, love.
We're going to move on to our traditional public audience, and we have two letters that we received. The first is from Joan Coe. At the last meeting of the Board of Selectmen, September 29, 2020, First Selectman Eric Wellman neglected to show the picture I submitted to be shown of Chief Bolter making a speech behind the Black Lives Matter podium. And there it is. I have to minimize. There we go. To support Black Lives Matter, that has a platform of maligning and defunding the police. As a result of the termination of Sergeant Trombley by the Appointed Police Commission, Town Manager Maria Capriola had Town Attorney Bob DiCrescenzo write an opinion giving the town manager control of the police department. The police department immediately voted no confidence in Chief Bolter after the termination of Sergeant Trombley. The State of Connecticut Department of Labor Board of Mediation, on a two-to-one decision, voted to terminate Sergeant Trombley with a scathing dissenting opinion. A post-trial brief submitted by Sergeant Trombley's attorney, Jeff Mett, to the Police Commission stated, "Trombley has enjoyed an unblemished career with SPD. He's been involved in many high-profile cases." Lieutenant Sheehan testified, as did the chief, that Jason is a very good police officer. Standing up for his right to file a grievance has placed him in the fight of his life to save his career. I've included the link to the complete brief for review. The town attorney's opinion led Jim Fleming to submit his resignation stating that he believes in the rule of law. A deputy chief position was approved, and applications both internal and external were submitted for the position. Rumor within the police department was that Lieutenant Sheehan was the choice of Chief Bolter for the deputy position. It is alleged that Lieutenant Sheehan was not chosen. Rumor has it that Town Manager Maria Capriola's choice is a state trooper from the Mansfield area. This would lead to a drastic change in the management of the police department. Lieutenant Fred Siffo, reading the writing on the wall, submitted an application for a captain position in another town and was approved for the position and will be leaving the department shortly. Corey Thomas, although told that he was a perfect fit, only lasted a few weeks. Another officer left for a position in another town. Officer Gary Gray, the head of the police union, resigned his position, and there are two officers in the running. The Simsbury Police Department has not had a consultant study in decades to review the management of the department. Now would be an opportune time to initiate a full and complete oversight of the department. The Board of Selectmen is recommending a four-year contract for Town Manager Maria Capriola, although there are many allegations that have come forward, and a Hartford Current article describing her abuse of power. This contract, if approved, and more issues ensue, the taxpayers would have to pay out a large sum of money. The town manager's base salary is $162,212. Simsbury is managed by boards and commissions with a September calendar for Simsbury with over 30 meetings. Avon has six meetings on their September calendar. The meetings require staff time to provide background material for each meeting. Staff and elected members of boards are sometimes required to attend these meetings. The Board of Selectmen has never reviewed the benefit these meetings provide to the taxpayers. These meetings provide volumes of policy statements that require time, creating a paper tiger without any accomplishments and many redundancies. Avon has only six meetings a month and is considered a well-run town. Why does Simsbury need over 30 meetings a month to provide services to the town? There have been allegations that Town Manager Maria Capriola asked an employee to change from an excellent job performance to poor to reflect her narrative that the employee should be terminated. If Town Manager can ask her employees to lie on job performances, what else can Maria do in four years of guaranteed employment? Why has the Highway Department been without a contract for two years, leaving them without any increase in salary? This is shameful. Other contracts have not been negotiated because most of Town Manager Maria Capriola's time is spent attending meetings and terminating employees. According to town records, Sea Tech Solar has not paid their delinquent taxes of about $70,000. Sea Tech Solar has solar panels on the International Skating Center in Simsbury. Town Manager Maria Capriola allegedly told the Tax Department not to send the marshal to recover the taxes. This is most unusual. Sea Tech Solar has asked for an abatement over the years and was denied. Sea Tech Solar has filed a lawsuit against the town, and after several years, there was a negotiated settlement that was predicated on Sea Tech Solar paying their back taxes. The town provided an abatement schedule predicated on the payment of back taxes. Since Sea Tech Solar has not fulfilled their commitment, the town should withdraw the abatement. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and News Feed on Facebook. This final letter comes from Maria Ecki. It's actually part of a larger packet that she asked that we read. And since we try to generally limit public comment to about five minutes per person, the rest is posted with the town clerk, and members of the public can reach out to see the whole thing if you wish. This letter was actually addressed to a member of the Board of Finance, Linda Schofield. Thank you for your information. I fully agree that it is not good to tax people at a very high rate and not give them good town service. I feel many others feel that we're not getting our dollars worth from our tax money. Only the salary of the town manager is getting higher for what I feel is poor service without the citizens' input. We need curbside loose-leaf pickup like West Hartford. I'm sure we could buy a machine for that instead of even less service from Public Works. We also need bulky waste pickup and garbage pickup like Cheshire and South Windsor to be included in our extra high taxes. As I said before, who's driving the bus? Is it the taxpayers or the new town manager? I did not vote for a change in the charter. I even tried to speak up against it. I've done many budgets for a Department of Public Library, and I've never seen such a mess with taxes going up just to add more personnel and salaries. In my opinion and experience, the more people that you have working for you, the higher your salary is. My experience with a newly hired social worker, Kristen Forminek, has not been good. I have the paperwork that my email, which was a complaint to Maria Capriola, about her was blocked. Also, a social services worker gave out my personal phone number when I sent a letter to the Department of Social Services, "Attention, Alvin Wilson, Legislative and Regulations Division, 55 Farmington Avenue, Hartford, Connecticut, 06106", with tracking via U.S. Postal Service so that I would get a written answer, not a phone call, and asked the Simsbury Social Services Department to get me a written answer to my questions. See my attached blocked email to Maria Capriola. My guess is that Kristen Forminek even called the police on me so that she could tell me not to copy paperwork at the senior center in front of a police officer. The police officer later talked to me and wrote me up in a police report. John Hampton has seen some of my documented conversations with Joanne Martin about a complaint form. Avon has let their police chief go. The police union and I vote no confidence in Chief Bolter. I have found many mistakes in the police reports about my family and me regarding my son's death. I've tried to reach out to the reporter of the Hartford Current about the article titled "A Disturbing Abuse of Power", and the reporter of Simsbury Police Commission Union "Take Differing Votes on Chief for the Valley Press", but I have not heard back from them, nor have I heard back from Officer Gray, union president. I tried to contact the union in defense of Jason Trombley to no avail. I would like to testify at the arbitration hearing and tell my story. I've attended a Simsbury Police Commission meeting, but I don't know how to contact the members of the commission. Now I will try to contact the State Board of Mediation and Arbitration. Do you realize that businesses and people are moving out of Simsbury to Massachusetts? Because Massachusetts has had Proposition 2 and a half since I was a little girl. Connecticut has no such law. Higher taxes, a similar climate, and social security is still taxed. I would not be here if my son moved from Simsbury. I'm going to, for the purposes of time, stop reading the letter. Again, we ask that members of the public limit their public comments to about five minutes. And if anyone wants to see the remainder of the letter, it's available in the town clerk's office. We are, actually, before we move on, let me just share with anyone watching how to participate in public audience going forward. There are two ways to do it. You can always send an email that will be read to our town clerk, Erica Butler, ebutler@simsbury-ct.gov. You can also join our Zoom meeting and share your public comment in person, but virtually. And we ask that you register ahead of time with Tom Fitzgerald, tfitzgerald@simsbury-ct.gov. We have a presentation tonight from the Economic Development Commission. Last year at about this time, the Board of Selectmen gave the Economic Development Commission some specific charges. And it's time now to see where they're at and to give them some additional priorities to work on, which I anticipate we would do at an upcoming meeting in late October. But I wanted to welcome Bob Crowther, who is the Chair of EDC. Hi, Bob.
Eric, how are you?
Well, thank you. Thanks for being with us tonight. If there are other members of EDC on the line, would you mind introducing them?
I'm not aware of anybody else other than Melissa and Maria.
Okay, great. Well, thanks for being with us tonight, Bob.
Ron is also on.
Ron's on. Ron Jodas. Great.
Hi, Ron. Thanks for being with us.
And Jackie's with us. Jackie is representative of the Board of Selectmen on the EDC, so.
All right, all yours, Bob.
All mine? Okay, so Melissa, you drive in the charts?
I am.
Okay. So for those who do not know me, my name is Bob Crowther. I'm the chairman for the Economic Development Commission and here to present a yearly update to the Board of Selectmen. Our agenda, we will quickly go through our mission and the team members of the EDC. We'll talk about the role of the EDC and the existing work team projects and team assignments that were given to us by the Board of Selectmen. I would like to spend the majority of my time on our accomplishments to date and then wrap up with our plans for the next 12 months and cover any questions and answers at that particular time. So, next slide. Okay, so at the top, there's a mission statement. This was given to us by the Board of Selectmen, a couple of key comments in here. We were asked to take direction by the Board of Selectmen to conduct research in economic conditions trends and to collaborate with community organizations which promote economic development. And we'll talk about that collaboration quite a bit in this presentation. The current team members, I am the chair. I'm also responsible for the business outreach and retention aspect, work stream within EDC, and I'm also the liaison to the Sustainability Committee. Tom Earl has been working on the business incentive policy and also is the liaison to the Business Development and Incentives Committee. Brooke Freeman is supporting our entrepreneurs and is the liaison to Main Street Partnership. Ron Jodas has been our liaison to our zoning commission, is also working with, supporting our entrepreneurs, and we'll talk about their work in the coworking space later on. Peter Van Loon has been working with the Business Incentives and coworking, also a liaison to the Business Development Incentives Committee. Charmaine Sevier is working to support our entrepreneurs and is a liaison to tourism. We have one opening on our team, and we are in the process of soliciting applications for that position and hope to fill it shortly. The list of staff members down below, Maria, Melissa, Mike, all from the town do a terrific job in supporting us, appreciate all their help. Tom Fitzgerald does a great job in organizing us and keeping us on track. The other people, Morgan, Sarah, Bill Rice, Diane Madigan, Andrew Sherman, and Jackie. I just want to make a special shout out to them. It's their involvement in their activity in all of our meetings that really makes this thing work. And all of them come to our meetings, are prepared, they provide updates. There's an openness, good dialogue going on. And we've really been able to make, I think, some good progress through their help and their expertise. A quick shout out to Bill Rice in particular. He keeps me honest when I start to get a little crazy with some of my ideas. But people have been very, very supportive of us, and we would not be the commission that we are without these people's help and support. And I just wanted to make a special shout out to them. And one person I didn't mention there, Andrew Sherman, who's new to the town, has done a terrific job with us. This is a chart from last year. I just want to quickly review it to kind of, you know, this is our view of how we are working. You know, when I mentioned to them I'm part of the Economic Development Commission, and I have to tell them that, you know, I really don't do economic development. It's not my expertise. It's not what I do. But there are a number of different organizations in town that really are involved with economic development, from our zoning commission, the planning commission, the Chamber of Congress, Main Street, the town staff, a number of different organizations. What we're really trying to do within the EDC is work across these organizations, bring them together so that collectively, all of these organizations are much more efficient, much more effective in economic development. We've been doing that through, I think, pretty good communication across all these different organizations. We serve on each other's commissions. We communicate with each other. And focusing on process and talking to everybody about how we can do a much better job of working with our business owners and potential business owners here in town to get things approved and to keep things moving and have the town be much more responsive. So we've got a couple of examples that we'll talk to during our presentation of how this is working. But again, it's through the collective effort of everybody on all of these different commissions, they really make it work. So the next slide. Okay, so these were our current work streams that we're working on. The ones with asterisks next to them are the original four that the Board of Selectmen asked us to work through. Those were to create a new policy around business incentives. In the marketing, we initially were asked to update the town brochure, but we're looking to expand that to something more robust for marketing. The third one was to create a process around business recruitment, retention, and outreach. And we'll talk about where we are with all of that. The strategic vision one was to review all the past studies done by the town, by the various consultants, and come up with those work streams that haven't been addressed by the ones that were given to us by the town. And we pretty much completed a lot of that work. The new ones we're working on, well, the first one was in marketing to assist with the Simsbury 350 anniversary events. But given what's happened with COVID, we really haven't done much with that. In support entrepreneurs, we're promoting access to business resources, information and infrastructure for entrepreneurs. And the majority of the work there that we're doing is around developing a townwide coworking space policy and plan. We'll talk about that in more detail. And then the last one that we're working on is assist with gathering feedback on wayfinding signage needs. But that's been put on hold, and we'll focus on that in 2021, '22. So we've taken the original four, we've added to it, and we'll talk about some additional ones we're working on as well. Okay, so the next slide. With business incentives, just a quick recap of the work that's been done. This has been work that Peter and Tom Earl have been working on. We did an awful lot of research last year, reaching out to other towns, getting their input about what they do around business incentives. We do have representatives from the EDC on the Business Development Incentive Committee. Both Tom and Peter Van Loon are involved with that. We've gained a lot of good insights. You know, businesses come to towns not because of tax abatements or financial incentives, if you will. It's about coming to a community that they know that they can, that they're welcome, and that the town is anxious to work with them. The Economic Development Commissioner and Windsor, you know, said it to us straight out. He says, "No, get the process right." And the whole approval process about when they come in, what you do, make it easy for them, work with them. And that's really what we've been focusing on quite a bit, and we'll talk about that in more detail as we go through this. So we've learned a lot through this, through our research around business incentives. We've taken that input, and we've created a document. We've gone through multiple iterations of the draft. We had our final meeting earlier this week, and I think we'll be in a position to present this to the board very shortly. Just some key elements of that policy. First is that we've really documented a detailed process about how the steps one needs to go through in order to get approval for any tax abatements. The second key element is transparency. We will put all the relevant information up on the town website for the town to view, and we've learned from others that that's a must. And then the last is accountability. So often, you see, you know, businesses getting tax breaks, and there's really no follow-up as to did the town, did the state to get their return on their investment they were looking for. So one of the things we want to make sure we include in this policy is if a business comes to us and says, you know, we expect to drive, you know, so many employees or increase you know, we expect to drive, you know, so many employees or increase our employment by X, or we're going to, you know, expand our square footage by Y or what have you, is to put those measurements, if you will, in the contract and have them report on them on an yearly basis so we can begin to track whether or not we actually got the return we were looking for. So those are the major elements, the major changes to the business incentive policy. And I believe we're in a position to present that to the Board of Selectmen sometime in 4Q, with a target implementation on January of 2021. Next slide. With the strategic vision, we've done an awful lot of work here. I pretty much view this as work that's been completed. We went through all the previous consulting studies that have been done, and we identified those that we felt were relevant and important to pursue. The first two around the application approval process through the existing land use proposals to make sure it's efficient and effective, and the consolidation around land use regulations and zoning regulations have been completed. Ron Jodas and Jackie did an awful lot of work with Mike Liddon on this, and a lot of the changes we talked about at last year's presentation have been implemented. And so we feel like, you know, most of the work around this has been completed. The third aspect there was to create an Economic Development Project Evaluation Discussion Guide. It's something Melissa and I worked on. That's been completed. And then the last one is just to, you know, create orientation, continuous education process for commission members. That's ongoing. So I feel like this particular work stream has been completed to everyone's satisfaction. Next slide. The business recruitment, retention, outreach. We have put in place the process in which we are going out to our major businesses in town. And we identified 11 major businesses, and we initially were trying to see one each month, give us a month of December off. We got through January at Kira Leaf, and we met with Steve Walker at the Dracula Mall in February. And then COVID hit, and everything was pretty much put on hold. We did have a meeting with Chris Nelson from Highcroft on Tuesday, yesterday. And so we've kicked up the process and we're starting back at it. But the concept here was that every year, we would meet with these businesses and, you know, come back again the following year and then meet with them again. So have a constant updates with them, see where they are, begin to establish a good relationship. These are the major businesses, the major taxpayers, the major employers here in town, and we want to make sure that they have a good relationship with the people there in Town Hall. So the process is in place. We're in the process of executing it, and we'll just continue to work on it through the years to come. Next slide. This is a great example of how we are working across the other organizations to, you know, provide a more complete capability for the town. Through the COVID crisis, there was a, through the joint leadership of the State Department of Economic Community Development, the Connecticut Department of Insurance, and the Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, created a long-term recovery committee. We all participated on a conference call with all the other towns, and they were asking us to create a plan for the town based on a lot of work that they've done, based on other disasters such as Superstorm Sandy and Hurricane Maria. What does the town need to do to make sure we recover from this particular crisis? And so we met as a group, and we decided we really didn't need a plan because, quite honestly, Sarah Nielsen with the Main Street Partnership Program, and Morgan Hilliard with the Chamber of Commerce, and Andrew Sherman, the work he was doing as a business level resource manager, were doing a terrific job of reaching out to our businesses, making sure they had what they need to get through this crisis, either help with business loans from the federal government or getting access to PPE or what have you. They've been working nonstop, and they've really done a terrific job of supporting all of our business. And I can't thank them enough, and I think our town owes them an aught of gratitude for the work and effort that they've done and continue to do. And that's been terrific. So the decision was made, we really didn't need a plan, and we all agree with that. However, there are aspects of what the committee was asking us to do that says, hey, make sure you take a holistic view of your community. So what about your nonprofit organizations? What about your churches? What about your private schools? And so Tom Earl and I decided that would be a good program for the business outreach team to reach out to these organizations and contact them and get their input as to how they were working through the crisis. So you see over on the right-hand side the different organizations we reached out to. We talked with Christian Formrac and Department of Social Services. We talked with Michael Libriera and Gifts of Love. We talked with People of Food Share, Ethel Walker, Westminster Master Schools, and then all the various churches in town. So the next slide kind of summarizes the feedback from that. So, next slide. So in general, the organizations are doing okay. Everyone's getting through the crisis as best they can. However, all of them expressed a level of concern about, you know, this really isn't sustainable. And so we need to, I think the next six months will really be very, very critical. When we talked to the Department of Social Services, Gifts of Love, and Food Share, all of them said the demand's been increased. Food insecurity is a major issue, even in a wealthy town like Simsbury. The recent Alice report that was published said anywhere from 20% to 24% of our families in Simsbury are at the Alice level, which says many of them are just, you know, a disaster away from being in serious financial trouble. So the needs are there. We've seen an increase in the food pantry needs within the Department of Social Services. They've gone from providing services once per month to one every three weeks. With Gifts of Love, they've been continuing to maintain a backpack program, which provides over 225 needy students in the Farmington Valley on a weekly basis. And they've been able to keep that program up throughout the entire crisis. At Food Share, they're seeing, initially, at First Church, when they come by every two weeks, the numbers dropped because it was senior citizens, and they were, most of them were senior citizens, and they were concerned about being exposed to COVID. But then, as the weather warmed up, they were consistently seeing the need for over 100 people for food every two weeks. And that's been pretty consistent throughout. So again, they've been able to meet the needs, but they're concerned about the sustainability of the program going forward. With our private schools, they're in a little different situation. Most of them have been able to secure the PPE they need and the testing programs that they were looking for to be able to open up and open up successfully. The interesting dynamic here is that they've seen an increase in their demand because, two factors. One, Connecticut is viewed as a safe state to be in, and with lower class sizes and their ability to, you know, provide social distancing, it was deemed as a very safe place to be. So they're doing okay. Initially, before the school started, they were trying to get access to PPE, but I think they were able to get that, and they were putting in place some additional testing programs for their students. With our churches, all of them have been able to make it through. Okay, the online services are not the best, but they're all doing okay with that, some better than others. Some of the senior citizens they found have been impacted by this a little bit more, missing the socialization that going to church every week gives them. But so while they've been able to maintain their giving programs, their donations have been great. And so they're doing okay. And if, one of the things we've seen, and we did talk to all these organizations, is that when this hits Simsbury, the people of Simsbury stepped up, whatever the need was, whether it was food donations or money or what have you. And it really speaks to the quality of the people that live in the town of Simsbury about how they responded to this crisis through all these organizations. They've really done a terrific job, and it kind of makes you proud to live in a community like this. So to wrap up with our churches, you know, many are doing better than they expected that they would be back in March, but they're concerned as we go forward, like everyone is with the next five to six months we're all for us. So doing okay, making it through. All the churches were able to get loans, government loans, to handle their payroll protection, to keep people employed. And some of them now are suddenly going back to regular church services with smaller numbers coming inside. So it was a good study, and I'm glad we took the time to get that done. I think we learned a lot through the process. Okay, and supporting entrepreneurs, we had funding in 2019, '20 budget to begin work on updating the marketing brochure for the town. When COVID hit, we had to stop that work. So the funding got passed over to the current year's budget. We finally, we got that approved. I think we are looking at a contract to bring in a local marketing firm to update the marketing brochure. So that's work that's going to take off. Longer term, though, what we see is not just updating the marketing brochure, but to take the content from that marketing brochure and populate that across our website, across all our tourism materials, to make sure that we have a consistent messaging that goes on across all of our platforms, if you will. And Brooke and Charmaine are focused on that and doing a terrific, they will be doing a terrific job, working very closely with Sarah Nielsen on that particular work effort. Next slide. So one of the works, the initiatives that we've picked up through this crisis is around the concept of a coworking space. And quickly, you know, the definition, what we're talking about here is space that's available in our buildings that could be available for someone who is currently working in town and occasionally needs a place to go for his own office to either, you know, conduct a meeting or a negotiation or what have you. And given that more and more people are working at home, you know, we think this is a terrific opportunity. We saw the need for this when Andrew Sherman was talking about it at Simsbury Library, about the Business Resource Center. He was book solid. And he was seeing a greater demand that he was able to meet and said, you know, this is something we really ought to be looking at. So Peter and Ron Jodas, working with Morgan Hilliard from the Chamber, began to sit down and start to put together, you know, what the policy ought to be. And we quickly realized that was the wrong way to go about it. So what we decided to do instead was Morgan and Sarah Nielsen were to reach out to the business owners in town and find out which of the business owners would be interested in creating a coworking space. And we were trying to get that kicked off that way and just get it started, and then we'll learn from that. We'll figure out what works, what doesn't work, what specific policy requirements are required, and we'll kind of learn by going. So that is work that's underway. And we hope to expand on that because right now we see a real need for that in town, given the large majority of people that are working at home. Okay, next slide. So going forward, we'll continue to work on these existing work streams, but also be looking for new ideas. One that came to our, brought to our attention by Jackie and Eric when we were speaking, was to assign an EDC member to a large development project that is underway with the idea that the EDC member would participate in, I'm going to get myself in trouble again, okay, would sit in on meetings around zoning and the planning and design review boards and what have you as an observer to start to understand all of the issues this particular development or business is going through, to get their approvals, and once they have been approved and begin implementation, to stay with that business throughout. So they have the history of their involvement with the town from beginning through implementation, and we stay with that business for years to come. As a way of beginning to build a relationship, we know what's going on, we can be responsive with their needs, but it's the idea of building that long-term relationship. So we met with Mike and Maria, we sat down, we defined some parameters about how that would work. And the key there is to really be an observer at these meetings. But we're going to rely on Mike to identify projects for us. And I think we've already identified our first one, and we're assigning Tom Earl to that particular project, and we'll get this work stream underway. So that's what we're doing. I'll stop here and open it up for questions, comments, feedback?
Thank you for the thorough presentation tonight. I want to see if any members of the Board had any questions. Well, you know, I think about the incredibly challenging year that our business community in Simsbury and across the state and country has had this year. And, you know, we have a phenomenal team in place with Main Street and the Chamber able to handle sort of the acute situation, and then the EDC, you know, being structured to take the more strategic foundational approach to say, you know, do we have the right pieces in place to be able to attract and retain the businesses that are the right fit for our community? That's the role you're playing, and really appreciate the work of you and your Board.
Thank you. I think we've got a great team.
This is Wendy. I just had one comment. It's as a, you know, resident, you know, you see the open areas or businesses that have left. And it's good to hear what you guys do because most of us don't know what's going on behind the scenes that we have in EDC that is actively engaging with current businesses, trying to bring in new businesses. So it's good to hear what you're doing, and the more people that hear what you're doing, the better to know that you're working to bring more people to town.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts, questions? All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ron as well for joining tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the First Selectment's report, a few items I wanted to highlight. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, I wanted to share that the town is discouraging residents from participating in traditional Halloween activities this year, including door-to-door trick-or-treating. This recommendation comes as a result of guidance received from the Farmington Valley Health District, the Connecticut Department of Public Health, and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. I'll share as the father of an eight-year-old daughter, I understand how disappointing it is for families not to be celebrating Halloween this year in the traditional way. Instead, residents are encouraged to focus on lower-risk celebrations that maintain social distancing and follow face covering rules such as virtual celebrations, drive-through events, or events held outdoors. In Simsbury, a spectacular drive-through celebration will be hosted by the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce, Culture Parks and Rec, Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center, and the 350th Anniversary Committee. That event's taking place this Sunday, October 18th, and pre-registration is required on the Culture Parks and Rec website. I have a number of updates from the Planning Department, a nice segue out of the EDC presentation we heard. Construction on Big Y is progressing. That store is scheduled for a soft opening on the last week of October. At their last meeting, the Zoning Commission approved the application for an electric car dealership on a vacant parcel just west of the Hoffman dealership. The Zoning Commission also approved a remodel of the Andes Plaza, along with a small addition. According to the property owner, work is anticipated to be completed next spring, and a rendering can be found on the Design Review Board's website. Also, a preliminary plan was shared with the Design Review Board for the redevelopment of the Simscroft Echo Farms property off of Iron Horse Boulevard. The plans call for the construction of a multifamily housing development consistent with the center code and charrette. Copies of the preliminary plans, along with supporting documentation, can also be found on the Design Review Board's page. The Simsbury Diversity and Inclusion Working Group, the Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities, the Simsbury Spirit Council, Simsbury Public Library, and Block Bias bring you a participatory webinar. Meet with these grassroots municipal and state organizations to discuss current civil rights law regarding housing and education, how zoning affects these laws, and how that impacts socioeconomic diversity in our community. The event's free, and pre-registration is required through the law. The event's free and pre-registration is required through the library's website. It's funny, I didn't include on here when the date is, and it's at six P M this Thursday, which is tomorrow. I wanted to lastly send a thank you to the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce and all of the individuals and businesses who donated to the Simsbury Art Trail. The Art Trail wrapped up the first week of October and featured thirty six life sized statues throughout the community. The feedback on the Art Trail was just spectacular and it provided a much needed escape during this very difficult year. I also, I know we've got some Spirit Council folks on and I wanted to share that I misspoke. That library event is not is not tomorrow. It is Wednesday, October twenty first, and I apologize for misspeak. Let's turn it over to Maria Capriola for the Town Manager's Report.
Great. Thanks, Eric, and you being everyone. First, I'll start off with our coronavirus update. As you might recall, we were reopening a town hall and the library the week of October fifth for walk in visitors. And we were very fortunate. The reopening went very well at both, both buildings. The town hall opened on October fifth and the library opened on October sixth. And we are continuing to take in person visitors for walk ins Monday, Wednesday, Friday mornings from eight thirty A M until noon. We are reserving eight thirty A M to nine thirty A M on Monday, Wednesday, Fridays for our senior residents. And again, those are the town hall hours. For the library, we are welcoming walk in visitors on Tuesdays and Thursdays from ten A M to four P M, with the first hour from ten A M to eleven A M being reserved for seniors. And we're also welcoming walk ins on Saturdays from nine thirty A M to one thirty P M at the library with no specific hours for seniors on Saturdays. We are still accepting appointments during other hours, normal hours of business operation. So we do encourage folks to reach out to town staff through email or by phone if you do need an appointment when we're not open for walk ins. At this time, Ina Memorial Hall and the Senior Center will remain closed until further notice. And that's really due to the best public health guidance we have available to us at the moment. However, the Department of Community and Social Services does continue to provide programs and services, such as our food programs to their clients in need. They've also gradually reopened a number of our medical services for our senior residents. And we're really fortunate and glad that they've been able to do that with success. I'm going to jump ahead to department news and notes. Some good news from our library, Congresswoman Hayes has nominated the Simsbury Public Library for the twenty twenty one National Medal for Museum and Library Service. Library staff is currently working on the nomination form. This annual award is presented by the Institute of Museum and Library Services to institutions that demonstrate extraordinary and innovative approaches to community service. So we're really excited about the nomination and wish the library well during this process. As a reminder, our Public Works Department is sponsoring a household hazardous waste collection event that will be this Saturday, October seventeenth. It will be held from eight in the morning until one in the afternoon at the Public Works Garage on Town Forest Road. A number of reminders and updates from Social Services. The twenty twenty holiday program is now underway. They are enrolling families who are interested in participating in that program. They are also looking for residents, businesses, and other folks who might like to help sponsor a family in the holiday program. So we do have contact information for Social Services for folks interested in participating or donating for that program. Another reminder that it is Medicare open enrollment that will be going on through December seventh. We do have staff that are trained as choices counselors. It would encourage you to contact the Senior Center staff if you are in need of that counseling. Also, some reminders on here about the renters rebate program, our energy assistance program, our flu clinics, and our blood pressure clinics. Just a couple of special events to announce. The Halloween Spooktacular Event is this Sunday. That is a joint initiative of the Chamber of Commerce, the Performing Arts Center, and our Culture Parks and Recreation Department. Pre-registration is required and you can do that at the Parks and Recreation Department website. I do believe that the Chamber is still looking for volunteers. So if you are interested in helping out, such as passing out candy, please contact the Chamber. And last but not least, a very good news to report, the Simsbury Main Street Partnership and the Chamber of Commerce are joining forces to sponsor our twenty twenty shop local campaign again. So they are currently looking for businesses, local businesses, who are interested in participating in that endeavor. The campaign happens on November twenty seventh and November twenty eighth. And if you are a business interested in participating in that program, please contact the Simsbury Main Street Partnership and their contact information is in the report. Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much, Maria. I'm going to move on now to select an action. Item A is tax refund requests. Wanted to see if there's a motion October fourteenth, twenty twenty to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of six thousand eight hundred fifty four dollars and sixty five cents and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds. I heard Chris and was that?
I'll second.
All right, Wendy.
Twenty second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Close. That motion carries. Item B is the acceptance of a donation from Big Y. You may have seen that there's a really cool looking pink police car driving around town. The police department's kicking off its Blue for Pink campaign, which focuses on cancer awareness and raising money. And in support of the campaign, Big Y has offered to donate two thousand dollars to wrap one of the cruisers in pink. Is there a motion effective October fourteenth, twenty twenty to accept a two thousand dollar donation from Big Y to support the Simsbury Police Department's Blue for Pink twenty twenty campaign?
So moved.
Second.
Any further conversation? With our thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes. Item C is an application for a community connectivity grant. Little context here is that the town has the opportunity to apply for a grant that would help fund the construction of a sidewalk along Firetown Road connecting West Street to the middle school. The stretch of roadway was identified as a high priority in our bike pedestrian master plan. I've also personally received several letters from members of the community advocating for a sidewalk along this stretch. And the total cost of construction would be approximately six hundred thousand dollars. I know, Tom, you and your team are working on that application. I wanted to see if there's anything else you wanted to add.
I think you hit kind of the major points is that it was identified as a critical link or a missing link that's going to allow connectivity from some of the new development along West Street up to the middle school. It's also going to allow some connectivity from the Belden Court down into Main Street. And I think it's going to be a real valuable link. And at this point, we've also made the effort of reaching out to Hot Metal Country Club, as this is going to have an impact on their property. And we've started to have a process of how we can work collaboratively to to come up with a design that's going to work for them. Not getting too far ahead of ourselves, so.
Are there any questions from the board? Okay, I think this would be a tremendous thing if we're able to to get the grant funding. Thanks, Tom. Is there a motion effective October fourteenth, twenty twenty to apply for the twenty twenty Community Connectivity Grant as presented and to authorize Maria Capriola, Town Manager, to execute all the grant documents should, should it be awarded?
So moved.
Second.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Item D is the road acceptance for Hendrix Lane. This is the location of a new subdivision of what's expected to be nineteen houses. This is the one along Climax Road. So we would need to accept the roadway for the folks living there to receive town services like plowing. It's been reviewed by our town engineer, Public Works Director, Planning Director. And they believe that the the road is ready to be accepted. I wanted to see if there was anything that staff wanted to add on this item. Were there any questions from the board? Okay. Is there a motion effective October fourteenth, twenty twenty to refer the acceptance of Hendrix Lane roadway to the Planning Commission pursuant to C G S eight dash twenty four?
Second.
Second.
A lot of people, I think Wendy.
Little three seconds.
Is there any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Close. Okay, that motion carries. Item E is a proposed public gathering permit. The Public Gathering Committee approved the application for a wedding that would take place at the Flower Bridge on November second. Congratulations to the lovely couple. Were there any questions on this item?
No horse drawn carriages for this one?
Not that I'm aware of. It was not mentioned in the application.
Or any other?
The attendance that I've seen from from the Parks and Rec Director's application, it seems that the party will be eight or less people, so very small event. And that it will be in the middle of the afternoon. Oh, excuse me, two to five P M. So it should be a short event and it has reached the committee's approval at this time.
Right, thanks.
There's a quick question to maybe to Maria on the process for the Flower Bridge. And again, because it's it's a bit of a unique situation and all this is technically, I guess, a public gathering. I mean, these, these are going to happen a lot, right? Is, is there a way to drop like a contract of this is what you can and can't do? For these is kind of a standard boilerplate, you know, no horse drawn carriages, tents, caterers, keggers. You know, any of the the craziness that we, you know, because it doesn't say it on the app, but it doesn't say they can't do it either, right? So.
No, that's, that's a really great suggestion. And the reason that we brought forward this particular event as public gathering permit was because we did have, as you all know, a wedding event where we were all quite surprised by some of the things that had happened, such as a horse, a horse drawn carriage that no one on staff was expecting. So we decided to take a bit more of a cautious approach and kind of go through a more thorough vetting process. It's pretty common for the Parks and Rec Department to get reservation requests for the bridge, people taking photos, people wanting to hold grace ceremonies. But to your point, maybe having some sort of a, almost like a template contract for the Flower Bridge reservations or something of that nature could probably be very beneficial. So we could definitely look into that.
Yeah. And again, I don't want to put words in my peers mouths, but if there's a threshold of like ten or less people or whatever, then it it just goes through or something like that, just to again, unless you guys deem it, you know.
I think it's a great idea. And I also would say, if you could even add, like, if there's overflow parking, because you know, people are starting to park along that guardrail. But if you're having an affair there and more people are coming, you might want to tell them to park at the crew house or something like that.
It's a great point, Wendy. And then also, you know, the other side is, is private land, right? A lot of the frontage along the river on the other side, we don't own and people don't know that. So.
And now we're just not to hurt myself getting wrapped up in administrative here, but now now that John spun me down that way, held my hand and walking me.
I'm trying to help in the future, buddy.
So I would actually put into something about alcohol too. That's one of the things that I think that to be, but just to make sure that people understand that at these events, that there's a process for alcohol consumption on public property. That just shouldn't be something presumed, not to frame anybody's parade, even the most minor amount, but that's the kind of things I'm kind of leaning towards.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that the standard, what you can and can't do down there can kind of take that. And then again, if they want to go further, they, there's, as Christie just said, there's a process for all this stuff. Make it clear. Anyway, I'm good with what's proposed tonight.
One other question. Does anybody follow up and check on what's going on there on this event day?
For the floor, for this wedding, that would probably be Mr. Traversky's authority for putting this before us, but considering the date would be, I'd have to check eleven two, I would assume we're going to have a weekend event. So staff on town property will probably be lessened and due to the fact that the number of people present wouldn't necessarily need the police presence. Oversight, I would have, unfortunately, Tom is not here to speak to it, but I would hope that he would have some kind of understanding of how it would be viewed by the town staff.
Yeah, just, just because of the last thing. And the only thing I was, it, this says it's eleven two, which is a Monday, just.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. I did not.
It's an odd day to get married, I guess.
It does say.
Before the election.
Wendy, they're eloping.
Any day is a good day to get married, right?
Oh, that's eloping. I forgot about that. Yeah.
If it's Monday.
Okay, it's a secret.
Available to at least be present through Parks and Rec. And I will bring that up to an email with Tom about that.
Any other conversation or questions?
Eric, this is Mike. I'd even suggest that if it's going to be on a weekend, maybe we want to give a copy of this form to the police department.
Chief Butler does have a sign off on it.
Okay.
They should be aware of any event. But yes, on a weekend, because of some of the concerns that have been brought up and some of the incidents in the past, it might be worthwhile that Patrol does know that there will be an event there.
Just they're not rambling, trying to figure out what's going on. That's a great idea. Thank you.
There are a motion effective October fourteenth, twenty twenty to approve the public gathering application and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit for a wedding event.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes.
Sorry, we had a bear in my trash earlier today. I was checking to make sure he wasn't back.
Ah. Item F is the proposed Simsbury Spirit Council Statement of Purpose and Procedures. I wanted to recognize Nicole Kodak, Cheryl Cook, and Tanisha Grant, who are with us. Thanks for hanging on with us tonight. I wanted to see if there was anything that you wanted to add before I open it up for questions.
I don't think there's anything to add, unless Kristen, you have something you want to talk about here?
Um, I think that you'll find that this proposed policies and procedures is very much in line with others that we've brought before you recently. It's very similar to the recently approved policies and procedures for the Juvenile Review Board and for the Youth Service Bureau. And we worked with Cheryl and Nicole and Tanisha to make sure that some of the language, to make sure that they were comfortable with the language as well. So I'm proud of the work that was done by this group and I'm hoping that we can move it forward tonight. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing. Is there any questions from the board? No, okay. Is there a motion effective October fourteenth, twenty twenty to adopt the proposed Simsbury Spirit Council Statement of Purpose and Procedures as presented?
So moved.
Again.
Is there any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. And thanks for, thanks for being with us tonight.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you much.
Item G is a request for a rent abatement at the Simsbury Farms Restaurant. This stems from a request that the town received from the operator of the restaurant at the farms to reduce the rent owed to the town because of a drastic reduction in revenue due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. The restaurant pays an annual rent of a little over twenty six thousand dollars a year. The owner requested that the town forgive about ninety two hundred dollars. And after further discussion, he agreed to half that amount, about forty six hundred dollars. I wanted to see if there was anything that either staff wanted to add or if there are any questions from the board. Is there a motion effective October fourteenth, twenty twenty to reduce the twenty twenty Simsbury Farms Restaurant lease payment by four thousand six hundred thirty seven dollars and fifty cents due to the impact of COVID nineteen and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the proposed agreement and the general release?
So moved.
Moved.
I heard Wendy and then, and then Mike. Is there any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that motion carries. Item H is a summary of the Town Manager's Performance Review. At our last meeting, the board met in executive session with Maria Capriola, Town Manager, to go over her annual performance review, something we do every year. The review, as it has in the past, it consists of six attributes and four goal areas. It's, it's, it's in the packet for anyone who wants to see. Overall, the board agreed that her performance was above expectations. And before we, before we move to accept it, I wanted to see if there were any questions or feedback from the board.
Thank you for putting this together, Eric. Good summary of all of our feedback.
Well done, Eric. Thank you.
Yeah, and just so everyone. Yeah, and just so everyone knows, as a board, we discussed our review and we agreed upon what's stated in here. And we've emphasized with Maria where we feel she's strong and areas where there could be some room for improvement, as we all have. And so we all pretty much agree with what's in this document.
Well, Wendy.
So just, you know, my point, I think that many of the handful of us were on the board back when the discussion around transition to a town manager began. Then a few more were added at the transition point and then here we are today. And I think that much of what the form, I'll call it, not the actual paper form, but the form that we're following is familiar to many of us who work in a professional corporate setting around matrix and performance management processes. And I think thinking back to Chris Kelly's intentions to really to push forward an evolved performance management process, which I think goes along with the concept of moving to a town manager. As we all collectively continue to push ourselves and push this town into the, to reflect the shape and the vision of its governance of the future. And I hope this is just one more piece of that. I'm confident in it. I'm very happy with it. I appreciate all my peers' input, the leadership you took on this, Eric. And, you know, we're going to continue. I've always said that my, one of my top priorities is top grading talent. And we're going to continue to do that. I think it's across boards, commissions, and just how we operate as a town. So I appreciate everybody sort of on this team maintaining the commitment that was, I imagine, set out a number of years ago.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you. Any other, any other thoughts or comments? Okay. Is there a motion October, effective October 14th, 2020, to accept the Town Manager's Performance Review summary?
With that.
Second.
Sean and Wendy, any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion carries. Related, item I is the Town Manager's Employment Agreement. The Town Manager's contract, as we know, is up for renewal at the end of January. And at our last meeting, we were poised to approve the employment agreement when one of our members, thank you, Mike, rightly pointed out that the length of the term that we were going to agree to of three years would have coincided with the Board of Selectmen term. And we consciously decided to, to ensure that the Town Manager's contract is staggered from the Board of Selectmen terms for a couple of reasons. And then the personal subcommittee met last week and is recommending a four-year term, which would end in 2025. Everything else in the contract will remain the same. Town manager contracts around Connecticut generally range from three to five years, so four years is well within the expected range. For anyone who was not part of the discussion on personnel, I wanted to see if there were any questions or feedback.
Yeah, Eric, that was my question. I would prefer to see the contract for two years. But if the board feels strongly about the four years, I would go along with that.
Yeah, I, I think for a, for a first-time Town Manager, two years might have been more in the realm of what would be expected. For me personally, given her performance reviews over the past three, three cycles of above expectations, I feel comfortable going with a four-year term. And of course, there are, there is the ability within the contract to end early, should, should it come to that. But I certainly wouldn't expect it to.
Just Jackie, so you know, I also looked at the two-year versus the four-year because I still like the three-year. You know, I was saying, just do the three-year and if the, whatever. But there's pros and cons for having the four-year because, you know, her performance has been good and we kind of lock her in at the current status. Because if it was two years, you know, we could risk the contract being, ending in two years. So, so it was kind of, kind of came around to the four years after discussing on personnel.
Yeah, I mean, additionally, the other thing we talked about is we hire every other person in town essentially for as long as they either A) want to be here or B) their performance allows them to be here. And the Town Manager position is a little unique in that we have much smaller chunks. They're not lifetime appointments and not advocating that they should be. But we still have the same protection for the taxpayers and for the residents in that if there is a breach of contract, if there's a performance issue, whether the contract is one year or 100 years, we have a mechanism to remove and replace if the, if the town is not being taken care of the way that this board, future boards, and the taxpayers see fit. So I'm not as hung up or constrained on the timeframe because of the provisions of, again, if there's a breach of contract, if there's a, if there's a breach of the employment agreement and the performance is not being met, we have mechanisms that are very clear and, and not easy, but clear to implement. If, again, this town is not being managed the way it needs to be. So that's, that's again, how I got comfortable with, with a timeframe, I guess.
Are there any other questions or thoughts?
Eric, having gone through the interview and worked with a number of Town Managers during my day job and both our review process with the Board of Selectmen, I, I think I'm, I am comfortable with the four years. Stand the point that Jackie and Wendy raised, but we're a good person and it's up to us to make sure she continues to thrive. So I'm supportive of it.
Absolutely. Thanks, Mike. For anyone watching, you know, just to be clear, what's different between this contract and her current contract? It does allow for an extra week of paid time off based on her years of experience in a similar role, which is consistent with how the, the town has, you know, the town has extended that benefit to other employees and something very common that many organizations do. The other piece I wanted to highlight was, you know, in the, in the very unlikely scenario that the Town Manager were to pass away while working for the town, her family would be able to stay on the town's health insurance for up to three months. And when we were discussing this item, it's a benefit that we wanted to also formally extend to all town employees. Very unlikely situation, but certainly the right thing to do if it were to ever arise. So I just wanted for the public to understand that those are really the two substantive changes between the current contract and the new one. All right, let me see if I can find the motion. Is there a motion effective October 14th, 2020, to execute the Town Manager's Employment Agreement between the town of Simsbury, Connecticut and Maria Capriola for a four-year term commencing on January 29th, 2021 and expiring on January 29th, 2025?
Done moved.
Second.
I heard Mike. Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Eric, can I, can I make a motion to amend the agenda to include the volunteer firefighter and ambulance tax abatement endorsement? I wasn't paying attention earlier on and I thought we were going to vote on it this evening, given there was no substantive changes beyond what we had talked about last time. So I'm asking to make a motion to include that.
Yeah, and I would second that motion, Sean. Is there any further conversation from the board? All in favor on adding this to the agenda?
Aye.
Oh, aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that carries. So this would be item J. At the very top of our meeting, we had a public hearing on the tax abatement for volunteer firefighter and ambulance personnel ordinance. Basically, the state has given communities the opportunity to increase the size of the tax abatement for volunteer first responders. And I wanted to see if we could get the chart up on the screen, just so it's clear to us in the public what we'd be agreeing to tonight. I wanted to see if, if staff could just walk us through and just, just give a brief summary for anyone watching.
Sure, I could, I could, I could do that for you all. Thanks, Melissa, for pulling that up. So really, the only substantive change to the ordinance would be to increase the dollar value of the tax abatement that we provide to our volunteer firefighters and our volunteer ambulance personnel here in town. The amounts would increase over ultimately a three-year period. So it would increase for the current tax year. There wouldn't be an increase for the next fiscal year, but in the third out year, essentially, there would be an increase again. So for folks with five or more years of eligible service, at the end of implementation, full implementation, the abatement value would be $2,000 as opposed to the current $1,000. And for folks with two to five years of service at full implementation, their abatement value would be at $1,000, which is up from the current amount of $500. And then again, if we continue to move forward on this timeline, if you all adopt this, this evening, we will publish that in a newspaper. But we absolutely should be able to implement this for the current tax year with the January tax bills.
Right, are there, thank you. Are there any questions or comments or conversation from the board?
Just that I'm supportive of passing it as proposed in front of us.
I'm also in support, passing it as proposed.
All right.
I think it's something we deserve.
Chris, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I mean, I'm a hundred percent supportive. But I served in the fire department for a number of years, quite a bit, quite a long time ago. I can say that level of commitment and time commitment is, is incredible that we ask of the folks who do volunteer in this fire service. And I can only imagine, you know, 20 years on, how much it has increased with the type of training that's going to occur now and the type of accountability. So I'm in full support of it. And I can also just say from anecdotally, I, as I, as I served, I never once thought about the, any sort of compensation that would be coming back to me. I never once did I ever hear anybody talking about it or even having that to be part of their decision to be a part of the fire department or not. It's either you let, you, either you're in it or out of it, you just love serving your time in that capacity. So I applaud these folks and I'm in full support of it.
Thanks, Chris. I am as well. I had a humbling experience where Melissa Appleby and I had the opportunity to participate in one of their burn drills and we had to learn how to put the gear on. And it took us, I think, about 10 minutes to put the gear on with their help. And we later found out that they're trained to do it in 45 seconds or some, somewhere in that vicinity. And it was just very humbling that this, these are volunteers, but they're professionals, make no doubt about it. So I'm very supportive of anything that we can do to say thank you. Let me see if I can.
Eric, I'm sorry. And again, I believe we might have one typo in the document we screen shared. I'm sorry, because we are just a little ahead of schedule, if you don't mind. If you could just give Melissa and I a moment, I believe. Let me see here. So I just want to double check the table here and make sure that what we have is accurate before you officially vote on it. Melissa, am I seeing that for two to five years of service? At the end of the period there, $1,000, is that correct? Am I seeing that? Oh, yes, okay, a thousand. I'm sorry, that was not a typo. We're good. I'm sorry, I just wanted to verify that. We're good.
No, you're right. And that's why we needed to look at it because I was looking at the same thing, Maria, is, yeah.
Okay.
Just, all right, the top is what it is. The 750 is what it's going to be with the 1,500. And then it's going to change again, right? So the last two numbers are what goes on into perpetuity.
Correct. Right.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a fair point of clarity.
Thank you. Just wanted to double check.
Yep, no, it's important we get it right. Eric, I have the motion if you want it.
Okay, it's in front of me. Actually, go ahead, Sean.
So I'd like to make a motion to move effective October 14th, yeah, 2020, to adopt the proposed amendments to the tax abatement ordinance for the volunteer firefighter and ambulance personnel as presented, which we have up on the screen now, which shall be effective 21 days after publication in a newspaper, having a circulation within the town of Simsbury, and further move to authorize the summary of the adopted ordinance to be published.
Second.
Is there any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Then motion carries. Thank you.
Sorry for the last minute ad, Maria, but thanks, thanks for accommodating.
Yeah, appreciate it. Finally, appointments and resignations. Is there a motion effective October 14th, 2020, to appoint the following individuals to the Simsbury Spirit Council with terms expiring on December 6th, 2021? Dana Albrecht, Sarah Batchelder, Carol Clark Flanagan, Cheryl Cook, Meg Evans, Anna Lees, Phoebus Barlow, Mary Margaret D'Argenti, Lisa Grant, Tanisha Grant, Rebecca Hatch, Lloyd Huey, Chris Kelly, Nicole Kodak, and Kosi Lee, Jean Ott, and Diana Yisley. Is that a move, Chris? Okay.
Second.
Oh, I was muted. Yes!
Say it broadly. Jackie, was that you with the second? Is there any other conversation? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Without thanks.
Congrats and thank you.
Was there any feedback from the minutes from our special meeting September 29th?
I admit, I have, I don't, correction.
Yep.
But I have to find where it is. It was where Sean withdrew his motion for something. I guess I should have wrote down what page. Pardon me?
What about our Town Manager contract?
Yeah, sorry, I'm not.
No, it's a good point.
I should have looked this up and had it pinpointed. But it said that Sean withdrew his motion, but then it said I seconded it. So I don't know if I'm supposed to legally second a withdrawn motion. So I'm just trying to find it and I can highlight it and send it.
Yeah, it's on page six. Right?
Yeah. You withdrew his motion, but then I seconded it, so that's not right, correct?
I think because you seconded the original motion, I took my motion off the table and then I, I don't know, Maria, keep me honest here on Roberts, but Wendy then withdrew her second of my motion?
I guess.
And then, I don't know.
I don't know. You could leave, but it just was an odd thing to read. And then the other correction I had was on the Board of Ed, it says, I asked about kids going, she said enrollment is 18%. Well, enrollment was down, period. And then I believe I said 18% was distance learned.
Hey, Wendy, I don't know if this is just me, but I'm.
I don't, not sure what I said, but I don't, I don't think enrollment's down 18%.
No, you're right. It's not.
Now here, I'm babbling about this, but I don't even, it's not making sense now.
No, it's a fair point.
Enrollment is not down 18%, that's all.
Yeah, let's just get that comment struck. Eric, you still there?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here. Do we need to, to do this as a motion or can we do this by consensus?
Consensus.
Okay.
Just for clarity, though, we should, we should have consensus that on the prior point on page six, there was no vote of my withdrawal of the motion. Just for clarity.
Yeah.
There was a vote to table the discussion, so I made the motion to table, so.
Thanks, Sean, for the clarification. Okay. Anything, I want to make sure, you know, please speak up if we're not good on the, on the minutes, if it's not clear.
It's a lot to keep track of, so these are phenomenal.
Yeah.
Um, oh, I think we just lost Wendy. I was just going to ask if she was all set.
Oh, jeez.
She's coming back.
I just got booted, sorry.
Hi, Wendy. Jackie just wanted to make sure that you were all set before we move on. Okay, good. All right. Are there any Selectmen Liaison and Subcommittee reports?
Just a quick update, we have a public safety meeting tomorrow morning. So if folks want to join us there, obviously, all you guys are welcome to dial in. So if folks want to join us there, obviously, all you guys are welcome to dial in. So we'll, we'll probably have an update coming out of that. But again, I know Eric topped it off at the beginning, but I, I did, did support the Town Manager and the First Selectmen on the advice from the Health District on the, on Halloween. And despite the fact that I'm being called a Grinch in my house, it is a wrong holiday, but right, right context. We got to keep the kiddos safe, so I just wanted to appreciate the Health District for helping us out with that, and we'll talk about it tomorrow morning in public safety as well.
Yeah, and there's a really awesome event that the town, in collaboration with many organizations, is organizing this Sunday, which is going to be a car parade, there will be candy, there will be food trucks, and you can sign up on Parks and Rec website. Okay, any other subcommittee reports?
Yeah, my dog was just barking because my son just came home, so I just wanted to make her comment as a member of Aging and Disability, that there were, some questions had come in on what we passed last week about the tax credit for elderly and disabled homeowners, that ordinance. I'm asking about what changes happened and what impacted, you know, it wasn't clear who it impacted. But the, the change was to line up to the changes made at the state level to include trusts in that credit application. And if people have questions on that, you can reach out to the tax office. I do believe the information is on the website, it just may be hard to understand what the change is, but it's really about including trusts.
Thanks, Wendy.
And then for the Board of Ed, just that they, Matt Curtis' contract was just re-approved.
Thank you. Any other reports tonight? Under Communications, there was one item I wanted to discuss in particular, which is a possible return to in-person meetings. And I, I put a memo together, sort of summarizing the challenges and my personal thoughts on it. But ultimately, I wanted this decision to be the consensus of this board when we move back to, to in-person meetings. My, you know, I, I would summarize that I, I want to move back to in-person meetings as soon as it is logistically possible and also, you know, safe from a health standpoint. And I think the bottom, the bottom line is that we, we can do it. But it will likely be a clunkier production. We will be wearing masks, so it will be hard to read facial expressions. And I, I think for me, those are sort of the, the stumbling blocks that actually think that someone watching this meeting will have a clearer understanding of what it is we're doing. But I also welcome anyone to disagree with that position, and I wanted to just see if we could come to a consensus tonight.
Eric, this is Mike Payne. I, I just had one question. If we were to back to public meetings, I'll call it, or face-to-face meetings, continue for a very short period of time to do the public audience the same way we're doing it now, which would allow us to not need as much space and everything else?
I, you cut out a little bit, but I, I think what you're asking is about the logistics of public audience. I know for me, there are, if you look at how other towns do it, there's really a range of how towns handle it. And I think for me, I would want to allow the public to continue to join remotely if they wanted to, to continue to write letters that we read, or to come and speak to us in person for people who felt comfortable to do so. That's my opinion. So I, I don't think the options would, would change. I hope I answered your question right.
I mean, personally, Eric, from my standpoint, I mean, we're not going back to work, we're not forced to go back to work for our corporations. As, you know, in fact, we're only a certain number are allowed to, so I think it's, it's different for every group. You know, having a new board in the house, my, my personal preference is, is I'm limiting my contact to, you know, relatively small groups, you know, and known groups outside. So I'd be personally reticent to, to come back to a large meeting space for my own health reasons. But obviously, I'll fulfill my elected obligation however I need to. But, you know, I think we're all dealing with, with different things. So if, if, I think, personally, I think we've been able to effectively govern and work with town staff through this manner. In some cases, I found it even more advantageous, as we've got our computers in front of us and more information. And in a lot of ways, it's been easier to, to conduct business, at least from my standpoint. Although I do miss sitting in the room and actually talking to you guys. But that's just my perspective.
Yeah, Sean, I, I feel really strongly that any, that if, if and when we, I mean, obviously someday we're going to go back to in-person meetings. But when we do that, I think that, that I want to make sure that, that people who don't feel comfortable returning are able to fully participate remotely. And I think, as we, we all know, having remote participants and in-person participants is quite logistically challenging.
And I, and I was one who thought I wanted to go back, but I did, the numbers are going up again across the country. And I think Connecticut numbers have gone up too, and they're expecting the fall and winter to be bad. So it's probably not the time to go back, you know, right in the middle of the beginning of winter. So it kind of winds up.
I'm in no hurry to be with any of you in a room.
Thank you.
You either, Chris. Any other thoughts?
Chris, I can't answer you, I'm muted.
Okay, cool. I just, I wanted to have this conversation, because at the end of the day, this is, this is our meeting, and I want the board to be comfortable with where we're at.
And just quickly, from a public perspective, I haven't gotten any feedback, quite the opposite, that this has been disended to just so the public that it's actually been a better or clearer means. And I, again, I haven't seen this much public participation on a regular basis. But for the hot topics that make everybody mad, right? There's always a meeting, there's always a couple of meetings a year where we get 20 people because we've made people mad. But we've had a more regular stream, I think, of participation this way, and, and I've been, I've been pleased to see that.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. Anything else under Communication anyone want to raise?
Your mom's calling.
No, she's over, she's up, she's, I can just hear.
Is there a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss an MOU with the Police Commission? And we'd be joined by Attorney Bobby Crescenzo, Town Manager Maria Capriola, and Deputy Town Manager Melissa Appleby.
Yeah.
Don't move.
Is that second, Mike? Okay, second from Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll see you on the other line.